Right after we go Thursday.
You brought a gavel?
I don't have a gavel. Well, thank you. But then, is it six o'clock? Not quite. Do I have to wait?
No.
Is it close enough?
I love my little toilet.
You squeeze the poop out of it?
I've got a shit with it.
Does it really?
Okay.
Rob wanted to know if there were sound effects with it. That would have been a good idea if you squeezed it.
It's early. Calling it to order.
Can we stop talking about?
Right. So, everybody knows each other, I'm assuming. If there's anybody here that... Oh, maybe John doesn't know them all.
Oh, no, I do, everybody.
Okay, good. Okay. Well, I didn't know if you knew Roxy. Okay, good. Okay, so then, I guess I turn it over to Timothy because he's the one who's gonna be the person talking about the review of the Urban Renewal Plan.
I'm gonna turn it over to Stacy. Do you do a call room call?
We don't do a full extensive.
There we go. So, just two calls ordered.
Yeah, that's all I do.
So, it is on me.
Yep, it is on you.
So, first of all, thank you all for joining us here this evening. We actually have a couple of things on the agenda. I'm gonna try to move through pretty quickly. There's no real action items, so this is really a review session. We will be doing a separate training session on January 12th. We typically bring in Elaine Howard, who's a consultant, comes in and does a training for the agency and URAK about every other year. So, we will do that again in January. At that point, I know there's a lot of questions. At the last couple of meetings, there's been discussion about, you know, what does the sunset look like for urban renewal? Do we want to go that direction? Those kind of questions will hold off until that training. We have a little more expertise in the room. I think tonight's meeting really is kind of to roll back and make sure that everybody is familiar with the urban renewal plan, because we adopted that plan in nineteen ninety-nine?
Yeah, it was ninety-nine.
Yeah. So, before most of us, and it is still statutorily the guiding document for what we can and can't do with our urban renewal district. And so, I wanted to take a few minutes and kind of just go through the plan, let the agency ask questions, because I think it's important. We've had some kind of interesting conversations in the last several months. I've had a couple of inquiries about why we're spending urban renewal funds outside of the district, which we're not. Had a couple of inquiries about why we can't spend urban renewal money outside the district. Those are all part of that statutory requirements that's laid out in the plan. So, with that, has everybody had at least a chance to look at your packets?
Yep.
So, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this. We'll take a few minutes, kind of to go a little deeper, just in case there's anybody from the public who's watching that's interested. First page of the plan, really, that cover is the map of the urban renewal district. And that district covers roughly eighty percent of our commercially zoned property in the district. And I think it was probably a little more when we did this in ninety-nine. It looks like the city limits may have expanded since then, going farther on Island Avenue. So, this is the district. When we talk about the urban renewal, we often talk about the entire district, because that's... We work within the district. Any project within those larger boundaries is eligible. However, when we talk about the urban renewal plan, the most important, a couple of things that I would talk about are, one, if we go to just section three, mission goals and objectives. The mission of urban renewal was to revitalize La Grande's central business zone by investing in public improvements, public private development partnerships within this central business zone, and facilitating development of commercial and industrial parts of the area, which is the rest of the zone, to create jobs and income which will provide economic support to the central business zone. And that goes directly into goal one is the revitalization of downtown. So, I know you've all heard comments. I've had inquiries, you know, if we're... Got the whole district, why we spend so much time and energy downtown? It's because that is the goal. That really was the purpose and continues to be the purpose of the urban renewal district. So, even when we talk about the traded sector grant and the... Combine that with the La Grande Business Technology Improvement Park Call for Projects, even when those properties are competing for grant projects, grant funding, one of their criteria is, do they create jobs or other impact to the downtown? So, that's why we have that bias there. It's literally the first item in the plan. Create high-paying jobs, not just to support downtown, but in general. We want to... We've got goals in there. To partner with urban renewal efforts with those of other economic development organizations. The development of the Business and Technology Park was originally a partnership with the county and Union County Economic Development Corporation. We clearly call out partnering and taking advantage of the presence of the university as part of our goals. There is a goal for housing. So, again, when we talked about the call for projects, and we've amended the criteria of eligible uses to include housing, particularly second floor, again, that's in due part, because that's already identified as a goal in this plan. Talked about a range of housing types that includes upper-floor housing. There's still some transportation goals. We have not done much, obviously, with rail passenger service in here. Adams Street is a local, I mean, arterial. And then, there are some goals in here that are really specific to multimodal bicycle use, bicycle lanes, enhanced pedestrian amenities. That, I think, we've seen some of those improvements with the Big H, but certainly, there are some specific projects that have been identified that have not been advanced at this point. So, that's really kind of the summary of the plan. It gives us our main goals. We talked about it here. We talked about some of the particularly streetscape improvements. We had identified a number of projects in here, such as trying to attract a hotel. Couple of these, when we first did the... When we first did the policy for this, we had to amend it. We removed a couple of projects that we had originally put in the plan, things like reusing the Union City people. It became evident, they're not gonna sell it. We're not gonna do anything without them as a partner. There were some other streetscape improvements, extending all the way out to Gekler. They got removed. Those got removed by ordinance. There is the opportunity to continue to amend the plan, yes.
Okay, I have a question, because I was going through this, and you talked about a high-quality hotel, and I was thinking, were you thinking about any place, any place in particular? And if it is downtown, I know you have a thing about it has to be retail, restaurant, or whatever underneath. Could, if we did do a hotel, I'm just saying if we did, could it be a lobby, or does it have to follow that criteria of a restaurant, retail place, or what?
So, I think that's a policy that the agency would make a final decision on. For purpose of call for projects, we have kind of pushed that a little bit. If it is a walk-in pedestrian sort of traffic generating storefront, we would tend to qualify that with retail. So, restaurants would qualify in that sort of retail capacity. An office space where you've got, you know, mostly your business is by appointment, is drive up, drive in, drive out, that's not necessarily retail generating, pedestrian generating, whereas a hotel lobby would, in fact, create people coming and going.
So, it would qualify.
They're walking to and from. That becomes the main entry point for accessing all property.
Okay, great.
So, I would argue, yes, the agency would probably make that final, kind of, does that fit with what we call retail.
So, Timothy, have we approached the train station again at all?
Not at the time that I've been here.
Okay, that's all right.
So...
I remember when we did at first, and I know that we'd have to build something. They would have sold it. They would have given it to us, but we had to put in, fill the building form.
So... So, that's a whole nother long story then, yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we haven't spoken with them about that project opportunity in a while, so...
So, we don't know if they're willing to sell now, are you, go in partnership with us?
I would say...
I'm sure you're right.
I would say it is likely they have not changed their plan.
I wouldn't agree with you, but nothing ventured, nothing gained sometimes.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah, really.
So... So, and then, the other thing that I would note here is, as you go through your plan, the urban renewal plan also dovetails and overlays with key objectives that are outlined in our city's comprehensive plan, which we're required to maintain by Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development.
LCDC.
LCDC, Land Conservation Development. I'll get the acronym right. And when we know the agency. So, we have to comply with that plan. And then, the economic development plan that we did in two thousand and ten dovetails and really reinforces and builds upon this as well. So, when we think about, yes, we can make some minor changes. Statutorily, pretty easy to make minor changes that impact one percent or less of the plan. If we're making major changes, like expanding boundaries or adding new projects that weren't originally identified, those become much more complex. And in fact, adding property beyond one percent literally is the same process as reforming the district. So, while the agency may look and see there are some things, maybe, that we want to update because it adds to twenty-five years since we did the plan. As we are this close to reaching maximum indebtedness, major revisions that would literally take the same amount of work and process as establishing a new district probably are not our best investment. So, as we go through our training in January, we talk about kind of where we're headed next as we're thinking about moving forward. I would encourage the agency and URAK to maybe look at, what are the big things that we've accomplished? Are there some key things that maybe we haven't accomplished that we want to focus on? Do we want to narrow down our focus to two or three, you know, sort of key initiatives? That kind of guidance will help us figure out how we move forward with the remainder of our urban renewal district's life.
Remind us again of what the indebtedness that we still have?
Seven point four, no, seven point four.
I thought it was about that one. Thank you.
And the pro formas that we ran for you back when we were doing this year's budget, I think we looked at, we had a discussion if we did, like, the extension of the streetscape and/or Jefferson, or just went status quo. How, if we take on those big projects, that really condenses, you know, the timeline by expanding that, the maximum indebtedness. Right now, if we just kind of look status quo, we reach that maximum indebtedness in about two thousand thirty-one, thirty-two. So, my recommendation is, as we kind of move forward, let this plan kind of guide some of your thoughts. When we meet in January, Colleen Howard, excuse me, Eileen Howard will be able to answer a lot more of those technical questions in terms of maximum indebtedness, what we can and can't do. I'll also have a cheat sheet for you in advance of that. As part of my role with, as a member of Oregon Economic Development Association, I serve on the TIF Tax Increment Finance Committee, and we have just spent the last year updating a past practices manual that should help you answer most of your questions. That doesn't mean I'm gonna be as fluid with my knowledge as Robert was, or as Eileen is, but at least we'll have a manual that I know has been vetted by folks much smarter than me.
If we have questions, can we ask them too?
Yes.
Okay. So, I have three specific questions. Like, okay, sometimes I just don't understand the scoring. I know that you give a certain point that, you know, possible sixty...
You're jumping ahead to call for projects?
Yeah, well, especially like this one.
I think that's coming up, though, later.
Oh, later?
Yep.
Oh, good, okay. Then I'll skip that one. Okay, and then there is, okay. On page four, down at thirteen, it talks about funding decisions will not be based on whether or not, no, I don't want that one. I'm sorry.
Okay, you're jumping ahead again.
Oh, we're still going, okay. Oh, well, I thought he was talking about different projects for that.
No, not yet.
Okay, sorry. All right.
Are we gonna have that in training before the retreat then?
I hope so, yes.
Yes, we scheduled that training, so it's before the retreat. So, it's scheduled, it'll be on January twelve.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a quick clarification, and I feel like you already said this, but I might have missed it. For the urban renewal district, is that the same as the central business zone, or is the central business zone more concentrated too?
Central business zone is much smaller.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, the urban renewal zone goes all the way out to the Technology Park, goes out to Portland Avenue, and actually tucks in and goes around, but does not include the La Grande Town Center. And then, goes all the way out past the Greenwood Motel. The central, or central business zone is basically Island Avenue to Fourth Street, Jefferson, Adams, Washington, and I think we pick up a couple, like, what other block in there?
Okay, yeah, because I know, I've seen another map that has the central business zone, kind of...
Yeah.
And so, I actually think that would be helpful, like, in the introduction or something, just like as we reference it. I don't know. Could be helpful, or just updating the map to have that.
Yeah, update the map.
Just to make sure, as I'm reading it, I'm like, wait. Because, yeah, I thought so, and I was like, just made a note of wanting to reconfirm. So, for kind of the purpose of tonight, will we be talking more about the central business zone, or kind of the urban renewal district as well?
So, tonight really was kind of review the plan.
Okay.
Make sure everybody's familiar with that. And then, we'll actually be talking about the call for projects and kind of some of the questions, comments, as we move forward. We usually kick that off in March, so any changes we want to make, we try to work on those over the winter, so those can be adopted as we get into January, February. So, again, I'm not expecting any decisions tonight, because there's still some questions that we may not have answers to until after our January twelfth training, or even this council retreat on the January twenty-first, so... So, but I think if there are questions or suggestions, we can start incorporating those, trying to address those, so that once we know that we have direction to move forward with next year's call for projects, that we can bring those back to you, get those improvements to be able to do that call for project on a timeline that typically starts in March. So, we're just kind of covering our bases, kind of keep the ball moving, while we also know that there's some thoughts and potential changes that the agency would like to make. Yes?
Timothy, just to clarify, several times in this document, it references streets. My understanding is that urban real funds cannot be used for streets.
Yes and no. He asked it, no. District manager has the correct answer. We can do new streets. So, for instance, we did do the streets at the Business and Technology Park.
But you cannot rehab.
But we cannot rehab, we cannot use them for maintenance dollars. So, they are specifically prohibited from being used to replace existing street road funding.
Yes, yeah, that was my understanding. I just wanted to clarify.
So, yeah, so we can do everything from the curb out for streets and amenities and all that stuff, but we can't actually, you know, build the street itself, or rebuild the street.
You could create a portion of the street, say, to get access to property or something like that.
Correct. Okay. Other questions on the urban renewal plan?
So, when I went to the LLC conference, while we were there, I was able to make contact with a company called Healthy Sustainable Communities that's run by a gentleman by name of John Legarza, and we've entered into some conversations with him in regards to some modeling that he can do for us, based off of historical data that we can provide to him from urban renewal, to tell us really kind of a healthy look at what we've done, what we're doing, and what maybe the way forward should be in regards to that. We anticipate over the next week or so to be able to make a decision on whether or not we're gonna actually bring them as consultants to help us build that modeling out, and more simplistically, I guess you could say, define a recommended way forward on what we can do with the program.
Is that different from the consulting that we did a few years back as we considered urban renewal?
I can't speak to what was done a few years back. I can just say that when we met with them and the modeling that they showed us on the platform that we would end up having access to, it was pretty amazing. And so, I, again, I can't speak to what was in the past. I can just say that I think this would be an incredibly helpful tool for informing us and making better decisions in the future.
Yeah, it might be worth reviewing. Mary Ann, you know what I'm referencing? Reviewing what was done previously, just so that we're not spending money, you know, to remake the wheel, if you will.
Do you remember the name of that? I don't remember the name. Do you remember the name?
The company's name? I don't remember.
I don't remember it.
I've got a copy of the old, it's somewhere here.
I probably have a copy somewhere too, but...
You know what I'm asking, Stacy? A few years back, we paid a company to, a group of consultants, to basically see, you know, how has urban renewal done, what's the benefit of it to the community, you know, has it? And then, because they found some marginal improvement in the tax...
Right.
I think it was out of Idaho.
I can't remember the company. It was before I joined the council, but it was...
I think they were.
Documents I've referenced several times.
Remember like a Zoom meeting? Or like they Zoomed in?
We did something like that before.
I can't remember either. I remember it. Yeah, that's a Robert question.
So, any idea what year? Couple of years ago.
It was before me. I think I was before.
So, it would have to be a Robert question. It wasn't before me that I...
Come on, Mary Ann, don't you know?
No.
Robert was the one who gave me that as I was inquiring on some of this, and, but, because, again, I know the city has done a study previously to look at that.
Study.
And my understanding is, you know, looking back on it, I don't know that a lot has changed in terms of how we've approached names.
And that's kind of what I remember too, because I can't really pull what, who it was.
Yes, we just need to track that study down.
Yeah. But we can contact Robert, I'm sure he'll...
Yeah, Robert, he'd tell you right away that you're...
If you guys don't want, I can, I don't mind calling them.
No, I got it.
Okay, good. You've got it?
I won't.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on the urban renewal plan? Okay, so, we'll move on. I'd ask you to kind of just still keep this, be thinking about this as we think about coming into our urban renewal training on the twelfth, our council agency work sessions in January. Think about, are there some things here that we want to prioritize? Where do we come on and kind of focus our remaining energy and efforts? If that'll help too, if you're able to have some specific questions for our consultant who we meet on the twelfth, she'll be able to dive into those with more depth and expertise than I would be able to. So, I would be grateful for that help.
Timothy, sorry, I, so, when we say, like, where to prioritize, are we looking kind of for that twenty, thirty-one, thirty-two kind of date, like, over like that next seven year span, or are we talking like next fiscal year, like, what?
You know, I think...
Three to five years?
I think that's up to the agency.
Okay.
I think, you know, there's no clear consensus. Do we want to continue status quo?
Okay.
And have that investment continue? Do we want to take a couple of big projects, expedite the sunsetting?
Gotcha.
There's no consensus, so that's really...
We've talked about both of that.
Where the agency has the ability to ask those questions, have those thoughts. What I would say is, looking at some of the projects that were identified, are there things you think, you know, before this ends, we want to make sure we complete X, Y, and Z? Or looking at where we spent most of our resources, we feel like this is where we got the biggest bang for our buck, we want to spend more money in this direction. That kind of guidance will help us too.
Now, that's helpful, thank you.
Because I kind of think that from the retreat last year, we kind of talked, or maybe it was later, where we talked about finishing the streetscape to Greenwood, to finish up that project, because that was prom, I mean, you can see it was the number one thing in this, these, these particular projects came about from meetings with the public. We had several meetings down at the library with all the people that came, and this is kind of what was discussed and what we want, they wanted out of the program.
And you're including finishing Adams on there as well.
Yeah, well, that's the...
Because it said that on the top. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, Adams until Greenwood, yeah. Just finishing it up and get it done.
Yes, yes.
But that was, but, you know, that's subject to change, but that was kind of what the council talked about, I know.
Yeah.
One of the options, right?
Yeah.
That was that and Jefferson.
But it was kind of a strong option.
Yeah, we're kind of thinking, finish what we started.
Things could change.
Before taking a bill, so...
Okay. Any other questions on the plan, or should we pop in and talk about call for projects?
Not the call for projects.
All right, we'll move over to call for projects. Again, a couple of quick things here, just quickly reviewing the timeline historically. This does not mean that we have to do this timeline, but if we change the timeline, the more lead time we have as staff, that certainly helps us in preparation. Typically, the call for projects grant cycle, we have tried to open those for projects in early March, and we usually accept applications through, usually our cutoff is right around Memorial Day. Day, gives us about a month to two turnaround staff reports and then present those back to the agency for your approval and a funding recommendation. That usually happens very end of June, first part of July, so that it's in the new budget year. That timing really originally coincided with a lot of our folks are planning projects in the, in the winter months and securing funding in the spring. And then by awarding funding, we're typically still within a pretty good window in the construction season. So we're able to generally move things through in one construction season. So with that in mind, we have, at least in the four years that I've been here in the role, we've usually taken time, sometime in October, to meet with the agency in URAK, review how the last funding allocation meeting went and make any revisions to the process or the policy based on feedback. So I think normally you have gotten a little more formal survey prior to this meeting, but I think we've just all been kind of a little upside down with lots of transition. So I wanted to, I know that we did get some feedback informally and through individual emails prior to calling this meeting. So, and I shared those in your packet. So a couple of things that folks have asked about, and we'll try to address those. Is a question of, this year presented another opportunity where we raised the question of, we, when we're evaluating projects, we give them extra points in scoring based on vacant space. But how does that factor in if it's a vacant storefront in an otherwise occupied building? I, this year, we had the show fitness, show wellness space in the psychatics. In the past, we've had the vacant storefront in the N K West building where the building is not vacant, but the storefront is. So we had some questions about that. Don't have an answer there, so we can talk about that one. Clarity of definitions of blight, that one, we've identified it in the policy. And I think that's the way that it's been identified in code for purposes of the urban renewal, tax increment financing. I think that's, that's a statutory, but I can double check on that. We can have that conversation. We had a question about creating a checklist to all required applicant elements and requiring that applicants include all of those elements or they're just disqualified for any missing components. I think we should as an agency have a question about that because that does put me as staff in a strange position. Somebody has a good project, good application, they're missing one component and they get disqualified and they appeal that decision to the agency. I mean, I just want to make sure if we're going that direction, that there's consensus and that's, that's a rule that we're going to be able to abide by or if we want to have, you know, more stringent guidelines than we have, but maybe not the, you must be 100% of the, these or not qualified.
I think, well, I think some of our discussion was we didn't have the best group of applicants this year.
Yep.
And some of the applications were not put together very well, were incomplete.
Didn't have like the knowledge of filling it out.
Right, but my view was this is free money. If you're not going to put the time into, you know, giving us all of the information that we need to give you taxpayers money, you know, forget it. And there were several of them like that. And then there's more of a debate here of whether we should still be doing that or flipping this into more of a loan program for maybe more buy-in, but.
There were some applicants too that were submitted like two days or so prior to the deadline date. And I don't know who said or if I made it up, whatever, but they were not aware of it. It was like, how did the information get out there for them to apply for those grants or for it?
They didn't understand that that was even available.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So how's that, how's this information getting out to people to be able to apply for it? How do we advertise it or how do they know it's available?
Okay. So short answer to that is we promote that kind of this one. It's on our website. We do multiple press releases, it's on all of our social media. I spend most of the winter talking to anybody.
Right.
Even remotely, looks like they might have a project. So I think sometimes there are folks who decide they want to do a project at the last minute.
Last minute.
And then discover, or there were projects, I think like Show Wellness, who probably wasn't anticipating she was even applying. But she found space and oh, by the way, there might be this grant funding available. So I think she's somebody that probably wasn't very far along in her project planning, a little less seeking funding. So, so I don't know what the answer is to how we do a better job of getting the word out there. I mean.
Do you go, after they submit a project, you go through it and go back to them at all and say, you need this and this?
We spend weeks.
I thought you did, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. That everybody knew that you did. You went back out and said, you're still missing this or you need to clarify this or?
Yep. So, I mean, what you get, even though it may not have, have been the strongest applications in your opinion, light years ahead of what we sometimes get as a first draft. And, you know, and, and I'm not going to deny the, the need to constantly figure out how do we upgrade our intake methodology and make sure we're getting responsible and complete applications. We need to do that. I do think, and I've made the point in the past, there is a difference between a developer who's submitting an application, who understands the system, understands the language, understands the process, and mom and pop business owner who are working 60 hours in their business. This is a new process. It is kind of complicated, a little convoluted. You're going to get an application that looks different.
Well, they also have you as a resource that you can walk them through that too.
And we walk them through.
Right, yeah.
The best we can.
But to me, this is public money and, and if someone doesn't put forth a really good application or then, you know, do they deserve that public money? Are they going to be responsible and with that money?
But then, but the really good application is kind of in the eye of who's reading it to. I mean, you know, some of them you can, I might not like it, but you might like it.
We're talking complete application.
Yeah.
Because that's what, that's what the topic is, is we had incomplete applications.
Yeah, that's what I, I mean, that's a different story, but I mean, just because I didn't like the project that.
Yeah, I'm not talking about whether I think this is a great project or not. It's whether this even looks like they could, they have a plan and, yeah.
I agree with you. If an application is incomplete, it should not be considered.
Yeah.
They have all the resources of the city at their disposal, even if, and we have seen this in call for projects, we have a very professionally done and then we have the best I can do, but if the best they can do is complete, it still needs to be considered. If it's incomplete.
And maybe the checklist would be helpful. It's like, you need to have this.
Right.
Well, they have that checklist to go over.
Yeah, they do. They have doodles of resources.
I'll dive into helping to explore ways that we can help, recognizing that Timothy is one guy with many things to do, but that doesn't mean that there isn't other things that we can't find. This is an opportunity for me to take a look at it from somebody who's less familiar and maybe comes up with a really ridiculous idea that might work. So I'll, I'll take a look at it and try and help the, bring the solution that you're looking for, both from a solicitation perspective and from how we help people submit successful packets.
So we have at least two organizations in the community that are designed to help small business owners. And something like this, I think, would easily qualify for their services. So, I mean, I don't think we need to invent something new. The resources are there. The problem is that we're getting applications that are sloppy. And, and I would argue it is inexcusable that someone would submit an application for up to more than the annual wage of our average applicant in public dollars that comes in with no strings attached to them for the most part. They just have to complete the project and do it the way they said they did or they were going to. To me, it's inexcusable that they submit an incomplete or a sloppy application. We should, we should be good stewards of the public dollar. And if we're giving money to people, I mean, to me, if you, if you can't take, I don't care how busy you are, you're working 60 hours a week, you're talking 75 grand. I don't know how much these business owners are making, but I imagine it's not 75 grand for two hours of their time. So we're just asking that they show a very basic level of effort, the same that would be expected of my high school student, when they're submitting an essay or anything else. This is real money for them. And if they don't take it seriously, Timothy, my opinion is, is I think has been expressed, we pull it. It's that simple. And they need to know that upfront. If you're working with them for weeks and you're still getting that as a result, that makes me even more concerned.
When you're saying we though, you mean you want us to do that, right? Just to make sure we're clear.
No, I, I'm saying when this application comes before the council to make a decision, yes or no, do we fund this? It better be complete.
Last year.
If we haven't filtered it to be complete, it does not ever reach the council, would be my opinion.
I recall an application last year that came in, I think it was even like dated two days prior to the deadline and it was totally incomplete and the penmanship on it was, like you said.
Hard to read.
Hard, yes.
Yeah.
And it's like, you know, how much effort did they put into it? You know, granted, they did how much time and how long, I mean, are they, I remember who the business was, but it was very unacceptable paperwork to submit.
For some of them, it wasn't even clear who's the owner, because I think there was a change in ownership and, but, but again, this is, this is public money and.
This is what they said, if they're seeking the public money, they better be putting the effort into wanting it and getting it.
And to me, what confidence do we have that they have the ability to run a business and do what they're saying they can do? This is not a difficult application. Anybody can read it. It's not a difficult application. A bank loan is five times as difficult as what we're asking them to do. That's, a bank loan is a very basic thing for somebody running a business. And so I do not think that this is a hard ask. I think this is a very elementary ask. And what we've seen is that we haven't been asking even at that basic level. We've not been filtering these before they reach the council. And so we don't have to spend that money. And we can choose to fund something to a greater or a lesser extent. So if, you know, if we're, if we're getting projects that are.
Worthwhile?
Yeah. I mean, I, I would rather retain that money and not spend it and use it on projects that are serious about doing it, that are giving the council the confidence that they took the time and attention to fill out a very basic application. That makes me more confident that they're paying attention to other things in their business, because is there a sloppy with their business as they have been in some of these applications we've seen? We shouldn't be funding. It's that simple.
I'd like to just throw out a quick ask out of every person sitting here, how many of us have actually tried to fill out the application just to see what it's like?
Actually did it for real though.
Yeah. So if we haven't actually gone through it ourselves, perhaps that's something that we should assign as a homework for ourselves so that we can actually be on board with what we're asking people to do. Because I am in full agreement, if an application is incomplete, then it should be accepted. However, if we're not understanding of why those applications might be incomplete for any reason whatsoever, then maybe we shouldn't really be as adamant about it right now until we maybe have a better understanding as counselors and URAK members.
Are we seeing something other than the actual application results that we get?
You get my staff report and the application.
We get the application. So that's, that's what they fill out. So you see.
Well, I understand that, but like I haven't sat down and tried to enter any data into a form. I don't know how frustrating that can be for somebody who might have an old school computer or, I'm just, you know, I think if, I'll do it. I'll do the homework and see what it means and like what it feels like and then whether or not it is a two hour application or not. I just, I think it's.
But it would be for some people. I mean, I don't know their business. I don't know, I don't have a business.
Right.
So it would be hard for me to answer some of the questions because I would have to guess at what I would think it would be.
But even just doing that lets you have an idea of what, what we're asking of, of the public.
Right. We're not even requiring them to submit a full business plan.
That's the part, yeah, that bothers me.
Right. I mean, find me anybody willing to give you money or help as an entrepreneur who does not require a full business plan. It doesn't exist.
But the devil's advocate, the, the money doesn't go into the business. It goes into the building.
Right. Project they're working on.
And we have examples of projects that the business did okay and then it failed and another business came in, another business came in, but the, the changes that were funded were what we were after is improving blight, you know, getting something into that building, decreasing the vacancies, you know, making improvements to the structure. So I don't, I don't know if we need a business plan. That might help to show how organized the person is, but what, what changes are they going to make to the building to make it more viable for any business to do?
But that goes to the fact that we don't always get the contractor. We get some kind of written thing that this is what they're going to do. Nothing really a legal estimate from a contractor, what they're going to do.
I thought we had to have estimates.
They, yeah, but have you, you know, some of the.
They're scored. Right, they're not actual.
They're not really. I think, yeah.
I think we're being shortsighted though, and I agree, blight is a big thing. However, the whole purpose is to facilitate a business. And if they do not have a plan, if they don't put forth the effort to complete the application and if it looks like there's a good chance it's not going to go more than a year or two, then we have another empty building. Yeah, it may look nice, but we're promoting business.
So, but to clarify, the call for projects, is it building rehabilitation grant? It doesn't fund the business, it funds the building.
Correct.
And part of our challenge is, we, if we have a property owner who isn't the business owner, which business plan does they, do they submit? Because they're not, they're not the business owner.
Well, I think for that reason, we haven't required that as a formal business plan. We have asked some semblance of what's going to happen. Again, and I, you know, again, to that point, that's one of the contentions for why we have not required that. We've talked about requiring that. We haven't for, I think, the reason, that, that's one of them. But I mean, it just, I mean, you look statistically, two thirds of businesses fail within a 10 year period, half in five years. So we do need to be careful, I think, of how we're spending public dollars because otherwise what we, what we end up with is another vacant space. I mean, why does a space look blighted? A lot of it is because it's gone vacant. It allows things to happen that, you know, it's not being maintained. So we do have a vested interest, even though there is an advantage, I agree, Corinne, to rehabbing a building, even if that business doesn't survive more than a couple of years. There's a distinct advantage to having a business that is going to survive and is going to have longevity in that space to make sure that it's not right back on the dock out of another blighted space.
However, is, doesn't the, the application ask for how long they've been in business? They have to have a certain number, don't they?
I don't think there's.
It seems to me like there's something.
It's not in here.
I was, I didn't look at that.
Right, I think the gist is.
Yeah, that they have been in business successfully, in business for so long.
Yeah.
I don't have, do we have an application here?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see it in the paper.
Because I remember that's part of the scoring, that how long they've been in business. So that. So that kind of, that was the intent of that, so that they wouldn't be like, just wanting to open up a business and this is what they want to do. We want to show that they have had some successful business.
I don't see it in leasing.
I think it was a question on the application, but I don't think it's contingent.
I thought we scored like that.
It's not in here. I remember discussions.
We used to, I know.
Yeah, I think that was, that's been.
Was that taken off? Or why was it taken off? Don't ever tell us.
I don't know.
You're wondering why was it taken off?
I don't have any answer. I will point that one out.
Okay.
I do recall that though, Mary Ann. Yeah, that was part of.
Yeah, because that was part of what we used to analyze. Are they going to be successful? They've been working in this business fine for five years.
I don't think it's been that long ago because I can specifically remember the application.
And I was thinking that was part of one of the questions, but.
Everly Labs.
To, to me, this comes down a little bit to the fact that none of us are experienced at making calls on whether a business should receive one year. Right, like that's what banks hire professionals for. And so when we don't have a complete application, we are being limited in the amount of information that we have. And I think, I think that minimum amount of information is, should be critical to every member of this council as we're trying to make the best decision that we can with the knowledge that we have, which is limited. But anyway, they're just, you know, my, my two cents, but I, I think if we let people know when they're filling out that application, that incomplete applications will not be accepted.
Period.
Period. Okay. Now they, they have a choice to make. Do they choose to complete the application at all? Corinne?
Or complete it next year if they're not ready, if they're too rushed.
I kind of was always thinking that we give them too much time to complete their project. They get too, too much time. I mean, yes, I mean, we've had them carry on for years.
Have you had any work done to your house?
Oh my God.
Or, yeah, contractors?
Yeah. Mary Ann, are you talking about the bowling alley?
Well, I wasn't talking about the bowling alley, just other projects. I mean, okay, we, we approved the one that was on the corner up here on Adams. We have a, remember that was going to put the, the rooms in and the, and the B and Bs? Right around the corner when you go out on Adams. I don't know. I have not heard anything. I don't know. Maybe the state didn't approve it because maybe the driveway.
Will that make it law?
I think.
Yeah, that make it law.
Are you talking?
I don't think I've heard, I don't think we've got an official request.
So those kinds of things, I mean, we've got the money sitting here waiting for them.
The apartment complex is what you're suggesting. Yes, I know. The money is sitting there, but nothing's been done.
Nothing.
Put in a large storage unit out of Island City.
So in the, the policy stipulates, we encourage the projects to be ready to start when funding is approved. But that they're required to be completed within 24 months. So generally, they'll give me a, oh yeah, we're gonna, we get approved in July, we'll be done by September. I usually recommend they give a, you know, a December deadline and then we usually, you know, by the time they track down contractors.
That was all phase, all phase electric.
Oh, that's right.
And they, they're, something about the ODOT and entrance into the, that was contingent.
But because they didn't, because they didn't, they hadn't gotten that approval yet. But we approved it because we thought it was a good, because it was housing.
Yeah, correct.
So right now.
Haven't heard anything about it.
It was all phase.
So right now, what policy it gives, is they have maximum of 24 months. So usually with the, the end of the, the, basically two fiscal years. I can, as staff, do an extension if they tell me they're going to be done in July and it turns out they need to, their contractors are going to take till April. I can usually do that in-house. But any extension beyond that two-year window needs to come back to council or to the agency. So that's why you guys had the question repeatedly come back with the bowling alley and you worked through that on numerous occasions. So most all of our projects do wind up either pulling or completing within those 24 months. We've had very few projects that went before that. The.
Bowling camp?
No, the Bowing Camp actually finished in under two years. They finished in like 18 months. But the local was one where they had to come back to council, to the agency, the agency had to approve. So I mean, I think that the two-year window is workable, given that part of our policy requirement is that they have to meet all of their permitting requirements. So getting permits sometimes takes time, got permit review. Contractors, we all know particularly pre, post and, well, post and, post COVID, getting a contractor is just.
And especially with old buildings.
Yeah, old buildings, unexpected.
And they have unexpected things to be ready to.
Needs to be flexible, given I know, I know a lot about the holdups on the bowling alley and the tech, the old Texco station, you know, the hazardous waste. You need to look at things on an individual basis and determine whether it was something they could not have foreseen. And then we have the issues with the historic restoration. Sometimes that takes a lot longer than we would like. So I would urge, urge the agency to be flexible, but still probe as to why.
Right, has to be the why. Yeah, I would agree that you, I don't mind if they ask for an extension and hear about it, you know, which is fine. Of course, on the other hand, I'm also thinking that maybe the agency should not be the council.
Well, it is.
I know it is.
Wear a different hat, Mary Ann.
I know, I know that.
Oh, you mean a totally different entity?
Totally different.
Gotcha.
And that's a piece that we've talked about.
I've thought that for years.
Yeah. So there's something I just thought I was going to pull out that maybe it needs to be.
That's a good question to ask at our January 12 meeting.
And I hear a lot of comment from the public about that.
I know.
Maybe it used to be one, a separate group, a separate group.
Not, not the council. That was, that was the decision we made when we first started this. And there were a lot of the public who wanted us to have a separate individual council who did the project and did all of the urban renewal. No, not us.
Well, and part of the rationale.
I mean, them, but there was a one who does the actual thing like we end up doing.
The Urban Renewal Agency in our city is the city council.
Correct.
In many other situations, they are separate bodies so that it, it just cleans the lines a little bit.
I think we're far enough along in this that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you still hear comments about that.
We do.
We still hear comments and to Dave's point, I would say right now in Oregon, the majority are similar to what we have where the council serves as the agency. They wear two hats, conduct business separately. One of the challenges with the separate agency is then you have the council not necessarily in alliance with how public money is being spent. So if you have an agency that's spending those public dollars in a manner that's not in alliance with where council direction is, then you have a much more complicated project. And I think that's why most communities in Oregon have moved to the agency and council being the same, but operating separately, conducting business separately.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Yep, so I would encourage you to bring it up again on the 12th.
Okay.
I, I still would like to consider point six of whether we convert the grant to like a no interest loan. And that would, I think that would have a little bit more buy-in.
What are you looking at? I'm sorry.
On the potential. The last page, there's one through seven on, I think I threw this one over here. I wrestle with this every year.
Meaning they don't meet the requirements or?
Just of.
Within the time constraints?
Giving money away.
No, to just have it become a loan program rather than a grant program?
How would that work if they're not the building owner, but they're the ones applying for money?
Same as it does them.
What would the collateral be? I mean, how did you, I guess it would be in the form of a personal loan versus. But then aren't we double dipping if we have the equipment and we can't do anything with it? And yet we're expecting the business owner who does not own the building to be responsible for the loan? I can't wrap my head around that.
Wouldn't it be the person who wanted to take it, the loan out, would be responsible, wouldn't it?
It would be, but what if they put it into the building with improvements that they don't own?
I think what you would see.
That's what they're doing now.
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially what they're doing right now. But I think what you would see is that people wouldn't apply for it unless they had a long-term base and the confidence that they were going to be in that building. Right, I mean, if they had, they had a sense that they were going to get kicked out in six months, they're probably not going to apply for a loan that they have skin in the game for. To me, the huge advantage here is it creates a fund in perpetuity. And so rather than just giving this money out and depleting those reserves, we retain those reserves. So they are, that fund is refunded every two-year cycle, or you could split it so it's 50 and 50. And, and it, it's a model that could be perpetuated beyond the life of the urban renewal district.
Correct.
On a city level as well, where you have a fund, a certain percentage that is added to it every year to grow it over time. But it is coming back. It is a fund in perpetuity. There are, I think Tillmook, if I'm not mistaken, runs a model like this. Tillmook or Newport, one of them had a similar model. Because the alternative is they go out to a business, right now business loans are five and a half percent, something like that, a good rate, often higher. And so they have a choice between getting a loan at zero percent with a very simple application or getting a loan at, you know, a much higher percent. Because right now, we're getting none of that money back. So even if you did it as a zero percent loan, you're, you're getting a hundred percent. But with inflation, it diminishes in purchasing power over time.
Let me, let me run this scenario past you. I'm going to specifically cite Tropical Swirls. They could not sell the building for five years, correct?
Right.
If they sell the building within five years, there's a clawback.
So they sold the business and it was moved to the Maridale Center. They retained the property with the improvements past the five years and then turned around and sold it again. I'm having trouble wrapping my head around the business owner bearing the burden of a loan, even zero percent interest. It's still an obligation they have. And yet the building is sitting there and someone else within five years will make the profit. Does that make sense?
It's, it's honestly, Ross, I think no different than what you currently see in a lot of business situations. So I leased a, a building for many years, my business, and the building owners weren't frankly willing to make improvements. And so we made improvements to the building on our dime, at our cost. If there are cases where the building owner will sometimes discount things or, you know, whatever. But we made those improvements with full knowledge that we maybe wouldn't be in that building space forever. Now, for us, we ended up buying the building eventually, so it worked out. But that's the case with a lot of leaseholders, is that the building owner isn't willing to put the money into the improvements, then they just bear that risk. So I, I don't think it's a, some foreign model. I think it's actually a common thing that occurs in the business landscape.
Well, yeah, it is, but then again, you didn't have a financial obligation.
Sure we did. We took out a bank loan.
Well, okay, there we go.
And that's what a lot of people do, because once you have the cash in hand to make that improvement, that's what you do is you take out a loan.
But you need that improvement to make the business work.
Exactly. So your choices, go out, buy your own building and do your own thing or use the existing space that you have lease access to. But often there's a partnership between the leaseholder and the, you know, and the leasing. But I, again, I don't, I don't think it's a, you, you bring up a good question, you know, what are the dynamics of that? You need to understand what those dynamics would be, but I don't think it's a foreign concept by any stretch.
But then the city becomes a loan.
It does.
And we've had that before, but that doesn't mean that we can't do it again. It has meant that it wasn't successful before.
That is true.
Why wasn't it successful?
Yeah.
I don't know, but I just know that I, I had those two years off and it was happening during those two years. I just know they got out of it right away. They had bankers who were in charge of the loans and they just said it's not worth it. So that's all I know.
Because they had to pay the bankers who controlled?
No, they volunteered their time.
Oh, their time and all that kind of stuff?
It just wasn't something that the city wanted to do, I guess.
And I think if you're going to do, if the agency wants to do, you know, a restructure to a loan, one of the questions you have to ask as agency or council members, probably at some point with both hats, is what's your level of risk that you're willing to take with public dollars?
Right now, it's a hundred percent.
What's your risk aversion?
Right now, our risk is a hundred percent.
Yeah.
We're giving it away.
Yeah, we are.
So if, if we get five percent of that money back, that's five percent more than we have currently.
I gotta, I gotta disagree here, but we're not giving it away. It is a loan and it's coming back in property taxes. That's the idea of this. You guys are missing that. So.
No, that, that is, that's why it goes into the building because it improves the, the value of the building and property taxes. I don't think we've had very recent data on how much that has.
No, we haven't.
Come to pass.
It's negligible.
Which we do need to have before.
Well, I don't, I don't know that. I don't have, I haven't seen that data.
We had before that, so this is what we, what we gave out, this is what comes back to us in taxes. I don't have, I don't think it's been updated at all.
That's the last study that we were referencing.
Yeah, that was the one that.
So we paid a consultant group to come in and do an analysis because the question was asked, is this actually doing anything positive? And it was marginal at best. It was a very small incremental improvement.
I thought it was significant.
No, it was small.
Oh, we need to see it again and have.
Yeah, we do.
It might, I would just say, I think doing an update would be good.
Yeah, I think so. And that was one of the things I had suggested was have.
But good point, Matt.
Okay, when you're saying do an update, are you, is that like pulling the tax records?
That's that consultant that I was talking about, having to do an analysis.
Yeah.
Tax records are inside the district versus outside the district.
Right.
How much more we brought in because of this and whether it's worth it.
I'm just curious, in that January meeting with Elaine Howard, is, could she speak to the, the loan component? Is, is she kind of savvy or understands the statewide?
She can definitely tell you what other communities have done and what they've found was successful. So she can definitely speak to that with some level of experience, what other communities have experienced.
Do we have to ask her that or can you let her know that that's some information that we would like to know?
I mean, I, I can compile a list of questions, but you could certainly ask all of those questions.
We'll see if we can get some advanced knowledge on that, yes.
Okay, that'd be good.
The other perspective that I think we need to take on this is you attract a different type of applicant when you're giving that money versus when there's skin in the game.
So I'm going to argue some antics, that if 50% match, if we're asking them to spend as equal to what we're allocating, they've got skin in the game. So I think just because we're, gets a grant, doesn't mean they're necessarily free.
And not everyone gets the full amount. There's small increment amounts that people are awarded that you know are investing much, much more, you know.
So, so I mean, I think I would just clarify that.
What you define as skin in the game.
What you define as skin in the game, you know, isn't just you're on the hook to pay it back with interest. They're making a significant investment.
That's a very good.
We're leveraging that investment with some grant dollars versus maybe loan dollars. So, but I mean, I'm not arguing that you can't do the loan. Just want to clarify, somebody who spent a million dollars and getting 75,000 has got skin in the game.
And that money has to be spent before any money's reimbursed from urban renewal.
Yeah.
So it's not like we give it to them and they use it.
Right.
They have to spend it and they're reimbursed.
They have to spend it and they're reimbursed. So that's a good point.
Well, I do know somebody that had received it and they had to jump through a lot of hoops because of this, or the historical building. And they couldn't change out the windows because.
And they couldn't change out the windows because they're the historical windows. And being a resident of the apartment in a cold winter and I had my frost on the inside of the windows because they were single pane and not sealed shut. I mean, lots need to be considered in it for people to use this money wisely, so. There's a lot of work goes in behind it. And that recipient didn't receive a full amount. They had spent a lot more than what they actually received. And it was just a drop in the bucket, so.
I think all these questions are good. I mean, that's how we figure out what we want to do.
Right.
The end of number six was honestly a little bit larger than just the discussion of the URA. So that's our topic tonight and we need to limit it to that. But where that discussion came into play was because of the limitations of the URA and only being able to use it within the boundaries of the URA, do we use a model that comes back into, you know, the general fund as a loan model that now has no boundaries to it, except for the city boundaries? So that was, just is it for context into where some of that discussion has happened historically, was do we sort of model this and then look at shifting it to move away from the URA?
Does anyone else have any more questions?
Is five done? Because that was something the staff said they were going to do.
We are working on it.
Okay.
We usually put this into our fall and winter work plans, because that's where we have time to dive into, to the back end of this.
Actually, I did have a question on five, though, because I was just curious with other communities that do have an urban renewal district, do they use different platforms? I just know, like, you know, there's a lot of different platforms now that could be user-friendly and putting the responsibility more on the applicant, where it's like less of a, you know, handholding on your end. And it's like, a lot of times, if you don't fill in X, Y, Z, you can't hit submit on an application. So I'm just curious of what other-
So the answer is yes, and every program that they use has its own interface.
For sure, yeah. I'm well aware of it.
So, yeah, I mean, so trying to find something that's got an interface that most folks can work with. And we do find this piece works well for most of our local contractors because it's very similar to what they have to submit to the building department. You know, they're used to doing that. Folks who aren't used to submitting grant applications, it's more of a process. Our big challenge is figuring out the functionality so that when we get it electronically and we have a fillable PDF, then when we print it, it doesn't truncate, you know, half the text that didn't fit in the text box. So we've looked at a couple of solutions that we think might work there. So we are, we're working on that. Even if we have to convert it to Word and send it to you that way, we'll figure out a way to make sure that you have... Because I think that goes back to some of the challenge in feeling like you didn't have complete applications was maybe it was there in the digital, but it got truncated in the printed version. So I'm not saying that they were missing documents, I'm saying that that was probably a contributing factor in at least one or two cases. So we will work on the mechanics of that. The other thing that has come up a couple of times, we've had some questions about continuing to deal with folks who get the funding, sign the agreement, and then forget that they have to get a permit, forget that it's in historic district, they have to go to landmarks, and they do those things.
I thought it said that they have to have their permit before within, before they get the application. It's in there.
It's in there, yeah.
It's in there, but there are some other things that people are still forgetting to do. And we're still dealing with folks who don't get the permit first. So.
But shouldn't that be part of them of the application? That's the incomplete application.
It is part of the application, it's part of the agreement. It's reiterated.
Isn't that easy to check if they have the permit though, too?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So again, goes back to, you know, there are other components, particularly the landmarks review if they're in the historic district, if there are specific zoning notes. Because frequently, what they'll get is they'll get they'll get their land use approval, but it'll have conditions. And so sometimes those conditions don't get put into the agreement. So when we do that, moving forward, we'll do an amendment to the agreement. So like if landmarks has conditional approval, whatever that conditional approval, that'll get amended into their agreement at that point, so that we have that ability to kind of just go back and make sure we're crossing all our Ts, dotting all our Is. The other question that's been asked is percentage and timing of partial payments. This has come up a couple of times. Generally speaking, the policy is if you're getting over fifty thousand, you can request a partial payment when you've reached fifty percent of your project completion. Originally, you could then get a second partial payment at ninety percent. And then you have to finish your project. We had a couple of projects that hung out at ninety percent paid for a very extended period of time. So that policy was changed by the agency. So you can still get a fifty percent payment at fifty percent of project completion. You can come back at seventy-five percent of project completion and get a second partial payment to seventy-five. And you're out at twenty-five percent. Doesn't get released until the entire project is complete. So that's the current policy. There's some question about whether we want to be more stringent. We have a fifty percent mark and a complete mark. Or if we want to go back to a lesser valve where they can, you know, get up to ninety and then just waiting for the last ten percent. From a staff perspective, I think it made sense to do the current split. I think fifty percent, there's usually a lot of upfront, front-end costs. Especially now, you've got to pay for materials upfront to make sure that you know what tariffs are going to be when they get there. So those front-end costs, having fifty percent reimbursed on the front end makes sense. I think doing a twenty-five percent split on the balance probably makes sense. I guess if the agency wanted to just limit it to you could do two partial, one partial and a final, we could certainly consider that. I would not, as staff, make a recommendation to go back to a ten percent of that final. I think we just saw lots of folks ten percent, seventy-five hundred bucks, I got other projects. And those projects just languished for a really long time. Because they had said they have to finish them. The final twenty, they said they would finish.
What do you think?
I'm comfortable with where it's at.
Fifty percent, seventy-five percent?
Fifty-five, seventy-five, and twenty-five, final twenty-five, when you're complete. So that's where we're at now. I think I'm comfortable with that. And then if the agency wanted to just limit it to two, I think that's workable, too.
I think you've been up close with your nose in it and probably have the best perspective.
So maybe leaving that one as is. Do we have consensus tonight on the loan question? Or do we want to maybe have that conversation? Continue with our consent?
I don't think we can make decisions during the work session, correct? That would constitute-
No, but I mean, just consensus of do we want to pursue more?
We need more information, yeah.
So. I don't... I'm intrigued by it, but I don't know that I... I mean, I think I'd like to just know what it would look like. You know, if we designed a model there. Can I ask just a historical context question? My understanding is we were not doing call for projects when the urban renewal district was first formed. So is that correct, Mary? So we started doing it, because honestly, when it was first formed, there were outlined projects, the dollar amount was aligned to those projects. And then as those projects got struck from it, we've got money, what are we doing with it?
We've got money.
Do you know when the call for projects was initiated?
Do you have a list of that somewhere?
I do, but I don't have it looking.
I'm just curious, because to me-
First, we waited until we got money into the system.
Right. I mean, to me, I just, I think it's a good thing to keep in mind. Like, call for projects is something that got added in later. It was not part of what the original rural district was. It was just another way that we thought, well, maybe we can accomplish some of these things. So it is not something that is a necessary component of the urban renewal district.
No, but it addresses the goals.
It addresses the goal of helping individual property owners.
It's one way that we can do that, but I feel like if you look at the last five years, the focus has been so much on call for projects because we haven't used that money for a lot of other things. And so I just want to keep that perspective in mind for the council and the agency is, you know, we put all our attention to call for projects, but the urban renewal district is something much broader. And the call for projects is a very small part of that. And historically, not even a part of it, so.
Is that why, Timothy, it all used to be one pool? And then it was divided off, so the call for projects received a certain amount of funding and then the agency, the city council, received another portion of that. It was kind of split. So in the past, it seems like large projects have been done via the agency. And I think we are working with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand now.
Yeah, so we do have a couple of different incentives.
Is that the reason for the split? Is so there could be money retained for larger projects, yet still address some of these other issues?
Well, we addressed it, then we've changed the amount of call for projects. We started out with a smaller amount.
Right.
And we've gotten bigger as we had more funds coming in.
It's completely under discretion. We could shut down call for projects tomorrow.
Yeah, we can.
You could.
But I mean, is that one of the underlying reasons? I mean...
So.
Or do you remember?
I mean, the underlying reason was the goal in the plan specifically calls for how do we incentivize and assist property owners renovating their buildings? And that's where that sort of became the call.
So if you go back to the goal, she'll see why.
So.
Because it all follows that goal.
But then we also have two-hundred thousand dollars that is an agency-initiated project.
Like four-hundred thousand.
Right.
But those are ones that we have come up with.
So you guys can create a project and then we have a separate incentive.
Not necessarily, because I'm thinking of the, I think Sabona Camp that has the bicycle shop underneath. They came asking for funding. And there was another, I think it was the fire station, the second floor. There were two or three people that came to the agency asking for money and they chose not to fund any of them, just to hang on.
Well, that's right, because it's our choice.
Right. I'm not saying that it's wrong. I'm just trying to figure out because usually with the call for projects and the ranking, money's given out. The agency has the discretion to let it build up for larger. So to me, you're addressing both issues. You've got money for the larger projects. However, you've got money for more local or rehabilitation.
Small business driven, kind of. Yeah, I think that's why we split it that way, too.
That's what I was asking. That's my question.
Well, it's because that's, you know, we had the money, we thought, how are we going to divide it up? I mean, not divide it, but what do we want to use it for? We wanted to keep a pot for bigger projects.
Bigger projects. And that's where the agency has full discretion.
Right.
Right. Okay. Just clarifying.
But it can change, like, we have to vote on, we have to decide how much money we're going to put into that project. And that changes, because you know that it started out with much less, like a hundred thousand, I think, or less at the beginning, because we didn't give out seventy-five thousand even at first.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but the opportunity, I mean, we're just thinking with opportunity cost, right? When the money's spent, it's done. The district folds, we pay the money back and it's over. So when we're choosing to fund, you know, call for projects every year and other things, we're essentially choosing to use that money for that purpose, not to retain it for something like a big streetscape or something like that. It's just a good context.
Yeah, you're right.
Just so everyone knows, we're five minutes from what we were scheduled to stop at.
Could I ask my one question?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Can I, can we, I know we're going down a line, but time is short. Page four.
That's right, you wanted that.
Page four of the urban renewal-
Four. Yeah, the call for projects thing. So this is the qualification. So I'm going to nine. It says, "Any past due fines, taxes, fees, or outstanding violations of local ordinances or permits must be addressed prior to any financial participation in urban renewal." Okay, my question is, if the building has been vacant forever, okay, or five years or whatever, why are we charging them back taxes and everything when we lost all that money anyway? We need to move on. Can you explain that to me?
I think that's probably a policy question for council. But it probably has some other statutory requirements. If we're giving them tax dollars and they owe back taxes,
But if you want to reward people for not paying their taxes, that is-
No, but if they just kind of, they said, "Oh, there's a vacant building, there's blight, let's try to help the city" and so forth. I don't know. I don't know why they would have to go back ten, five years or whatever to pay all those back taxes when we weren't getting the money anyway. But now they could take the money that they have and now improve it, and now that will be more of a tax thing. I don't know. I would hate to move into a house.
Are you assuming that the taxes haven't been paid?
Well, that's what it says here.
Oh, which one, number?
It's number nine. And it's saying, I don't know, I mean, I would hate to buy a house and then find out, hello, there's back taxes. I would be a little annoyed because here I'm trying to improve the house, do all this stuff or a building, and then I would have to pay what somebody else didn't pay.
I don't think they could sell the home.
I don't think they can, too. There's a lien against it.
Right, the city has-
There would be a tax lien.
Remember, we've had-
Okay, then who pays that lien?
It would be the one selling the properties.
Okay, so it wouldn't be the new, okay, no.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's fair.
The title company would hold the monies
Yeah.
to go to where the money is owed.
You're thinking if someone buys that property to rehabilitate it, not someone who already owns it and owes taxes? Right, so if, I mean, if they haven't paid their back taxes, don't we as a city have ordinances and so forth that you could put a lien on it or you could do whatever, you could get money?
Yes. Yeah, taxing has put on it, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Because somebody should pay it, but not the new person. I don't know.
In theory, if they sold it, upon selling it, that the lien would get paid off.
But it would be from the original owner.
From the original owner.
But not the new owner.
Exactly.
Cool. Okay, so I just read that. It was written.
What I thought you were saying is forgiveness of taxes in order to get a blighted building.
Yeah, I'm sure she was saying that, yes.
Oh, no, no, no. I just kind of thought, oh.
Three minutes.
Sorry. I asked my question. I felt good.
Was there another question, Denise, that you had in that?
About the scoring. The scoring just some things just don't compute to me, but that's okay. But we'll talk about it in a minute.
We'll be able to discuss what we're doing.
Right, yeah.
So any other questions?
Does this give you directions, anything?
Yeah, it gives me some directions. There's some things that, you know, we can, you know, work on some proposed draft language. But it's like we've got lots more discussion on the loan piece. It gives me good information to give to Gives me good information to give to our consultant for the January 12th meeting, kind of let her know, these are a couple of things where we're still having some discussion. And I think I've got enough consensus to come back to you at some point in January, with a, sort of, here's what this would look like with these proposed changes based on.
And I think, Timothy, with your experience dealing with applicants, if you feel like there's an area of the application that's sticky for people, you know, that's, there's an opportunity that we have to revise that and say, is this necessary as part of the application, or should we reword this or simplify it? So, you know, I think, we want complete applications, is what I'm hearing, but, you know, if you feel like there's something in there that's making it too difficult, yeah, let's hear and take an opportunity and revise it.
Okay.
Timothy, real quick, do you want everybody to keep their packet, or do you, like, what is your suggestion?
You know, I would keep your packets.
Yeah, I would keep this, yeah.
Just can continue to review those a little bit, because I think, I think being more familiar with the plan will certainly help shape your questions and help you maybe ask better questions when we meet again in June. And if you have questions that come between January.
It's a kid's head.
We'll meet in January with your consultant. And in the meantime, if you have other questions that you wanna make sure that we get on the list, feel free to email those to me, and we'll kind of keep a list that we'll work with our consultant at a time.
Has a time been set for that January 12th meeting? It will be at six, do we know?
I believe we've scheduled six today.
We're at seven-thirty right now.
No, I mean, we started, we started.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just making sure everybody's tracking.
Will you be sending out details on that?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I like to mark your calendars.
Yeah, I will do that. That's why I was like, what, six to seven-thirty?
It has confirmed with Eileen, for sure.
Okay, perfect.
And it will be at six P.M.
Seven-thirty on the job.
Six P.M.
You got the calendar. Any other questions?
Fantasy football?
How are the Mariners doing?
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
We were up three-one, now we're down four-three, which one's better?
You knew that's what that was.